Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I would like to begin by reading the following notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. University may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now take a moment to request that everyone switch off his or her cellphone? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. It's a great pleasure for me to announce that Trustee Carol A. Robles-Roman, Deputy Mayor for Legal Affairs and Counsel to the Mayor, and Iris Weinsholl, Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction and Management, will be among the exceptional women being honored this year at the New York City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce's Women's History Month Luncheon on March 13, 2009. The other distinguished honorees are First Lady Michelle Paige Patterson and Sally Hernandez-Panero. Congratulations to you both. I'm pleased to report that the Board held its Brooklyn Borough hearing at the Brooklyn Borough Hall in its courtroom on Tuesday, February 17, 2009. Vice Chairman Philip Berry chaired that meeting, chaired that hearing, which was also attended by Trustees Rita DiMartino and Professor Manfred Philip, Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Alan Dobrin, and members of the Chancellery, along with CUNY's Brooklyn College Presidents. A summary of that hearing has been circulated to the trustees and to the Chancellor's Cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the Secretary. The Board will hold its next Borough hearing on Staten Island on Monday, March 9, 2009, at the College of Staten Island. I have been informed by Chancellor Goldstein that our dear friend and longtime colleague, President Edison O. Jackson, has recently informed the Chancellor of his intention to retire from the presidency of Medgar Evers College. Edison, we'll have ample opportunity in a formal way to express our appreciation when you conclude your very long and distinguished service to Medgar Evers and to the university. But I did want to say, as one of our longest-standing and most eminent Presidents, how much, how grateful we are to you for your extraordinary leadership over virtually two decades as the leader of Medgar Evers College. You are not only the senior college president of the CUNY system in years, but in eminence and in our affection, and so I want to congratulate you and tell you how much we look forward to working with you in the months ahead. And I'd like to ask the Chancellor to say a few words at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I lost the battle with Mrs. Jackson, who has asked me to be sympathetic and push her husband into retirement, and I've always avoided that because Edison not only has been a wonderful friend and will continue to be a wonderful friend for so many years, and a trusted and good counsel to me and others in the university. Edison, when I think about your time at the university, if you recall, you started in September of 1989, so this will be going on 20 years of service to the university. I think about the great advocacy of developing a very extensive capital campaign for Medgar that resulted in new construction, including the completed School of Business and Student Services Building and the soon-to-be-completed academic complex that is still scheduled, I guess, Iris, on 2010. And I tried to keep you as long as 2010, but I guess I lost that battle. Since 1989, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, student enrollment has increased over 71 percent at Medgar. That is a record of any institution here in the university. We're deeply proud of our Black Male Initiative, which is something that is strongly supported by the Board. The idea for the Black Male Initiative started with Edison, and Edison, it was your leadership and your indefatigableness about the plight of young African-American men that led us to come forward and scale up your brilliance in creating the Black Male Initiative, and we will always be grateful for that. Student performance at the College has improved as well, with pass rates on education and nursing licenseure exam reaching 95 percent and 100 percent respectively. I remember in the early years of my time here as Chancellor, the numbers were very, very different, and we had many discussions, and you really took the, took this under your wing and really pushed it forward. I can go on and on, Mr. Chairman. We will have ample opportunities over the next several months to show our appreciation, and I know that you will be very helpful as we look for a successor to fill those very large shoes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that we're going to miss you very much, and I want to have an standing ovation for you.
I thought, I think Trustee Weisfeld thought we were poring to his arrival. I have, in consultation with the Chancellor, appointed the following trustees who have agreed to serve on the search committee, to recommend a new president of Medgar Evers College. Vice Chairman Philip Berry will chair that committee, and Trustees Valerie Beal, Rita DiMartino, Jeffrey Weisfeld, and Wellington Chen will serve as trustee members. President Marcia Keys will serve as the presidential representative on the committee, and faculty, students, and alumni will be selected pursuant to the university's guidelines. Thank you to all the members who agreed to serve on that important committee. The 44th Annual CUNY Athletic Conference Con Edison Senior College Basketball Championships began on Saturday, February 21 and will run through Friday, February 27. The championship games for both the men and women are this coming Friday night, February 27, at City College. The winners of each game automatically advance to the NCAA Division III basketball tournaments. The swimming championships concluded earlier this month with Hunter Women and Lehman Men capturing titles. Congratulations to them. I want to thank Mayor Bloomberg for visiting the Apex Complex at Lehman College to chat with the winning team and to watch the Lehman-Hunter Men's Basketball Game in its entirety. Congratulations to all participants, and good luck to the teams playing on Friday. I'd like now to call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lehman College Distinguished Professor of Music John Corriglano recently won his third Grammy Award for Best Classical Contemporary Composition for Mr. Trambourine Man, Seven Poems of Bob Dylan. Congratulations. LaGuardia Community College Professor of Chemistry Ivan Rivera Torres has become the first community college professor admitted to the New York Structural Biology Group. Congratulations. Graduate Center Distinguished Professor Richard Alba has received the 2009 Merit Award from the Eastern Sociological Society, the largest of the regional associations of sociologists, for his lifetime academic contributions to sociology. Congratulations to him. And Lehman College and Graduate Center Assistant Professor of Nursing, Dr. Susan Kleiman, has received the 2008 Book of the Year Award in Nursing Education for her book entitled "Human-Centered Nursing: The Foundation of Quality Care." Congratulations to all of our honored faculty. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. May I now call on Trustee Rita DiMartino to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to inform you that the university has three Harry S. Truman Scholarship finalists. They are Joseph Eastman, who is a McCauley Honors College student at Hunter College; Don Gomez, who is a student at the City College of New York; and Tara McQueen, a student from Brooklyn College. Congratulations to all of you. Several Queens College Aaron Copland School of Music alumni were recognized at the Grammy Awards in the musical category. Pianist, bandleader, and composer Arturo O'Farrell received the Grammy for the Best Latin Jazz Album of the Year. Composer George Santakis was nominated for his composition in the Best New Classical Composition category, while trombonist, bandleader, and composer Conrad Herwig was nominated for his composition in the Best Latin Jazz Album of the Year category. Finally, Joanne Foyetta was acknowledged for conducting the orchestra that recorded Lehman College Distinguished Professor John Corriglano's winning composition. Congratulations to you all. Hunter College Classics and English Literature Sophomore Manuel Andino has won the American Philological Association's Summer Minority Scholarship and will receive $3,000 to study history and culture in a six-week program in Europe. Congratulations. Twenty-nine Hostos Community College graduates from the Radiologic Technology Program, SAT, for the certifying examination administered by the American Registry of Radiologic Technologists, and every student passed the examination with an average score of 88.2 percent. Congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our January 26, 2009, meeting. May I now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on recent activities?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start with some comments about the recently enacted stimulus bill that is working its way now through New York State. Many of you know that the Chairman Schmidt and I were very much involved at the very earliest stages in mobilizing many of the top CEOs of the very, very best public universities in the United States to create awareness about the importance of investing in public higher education. And I'm, and we did this with Carnegie Corporation that was very helpful in not only helping to mobilize some of these people, but also paying many of the bills that were needed when we assembled here in New York. Since that time, public higher education has gotten a fair amount of play, not as much as we would like to see, but I think through that mobilization and also all of the associations, Nissalgic, Ask You, AAU, and others, that we served as a catalyst for, helped to participate in an environment that got the attention of both the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, and we're pleased that some of that money is going to be coming to New York State and will benefit SUNY and CUNY. I can't speak with a lot of specificity at this particular time because the Division of the Budget has been working tirelessly to wade through the thousand or so pages of this bill, but at the end of the day, I fully expect that the university, we here at CUNY, will be the recipient of the subvention of support that will help us in a very significant way as we go forward. We need to be mindful, and I've made this point to our Presidents on several occasions, that this is one-time money, and that any of the planning that we do with this money has to be done very thoughtfully because we want to avoid embedding these dollars into our base because there will be little or no expectation after the first two or possibly three years that that money will be recurring. Nonetheless, there is a lot of discussion going on, and we are truly at the center of that discussion. I had recommended to Governor Patterson that with the new Economic Recovery and Reinvestment Cabinet that was created by the governor, that Iris Weinsholl would represent us as a senior advisor for infrastructure and transportation. Timothy Gilchrist is serving as the Chair of that committee, and I wonder, Iris, if you could just say a few words, you went to the initial meeting, and where you see, perhaps, are we going from this particular point forward?
Sure, Mr. Chancellor. There was a meeting last Wednesday in Albany, and all the major players were around the table, both transportation agencies, infrastructure agencies, energy agencies, and what the governor hopes to do is to have a list of projects that fall within the category that has been set down by the federal economic stimulus package, basically that the money has to be ready to be used in 120 days, and if you don't use it, you lose it. They're looking for green projects and projects that will be energy-efficient. Prior to this meeting, CUNY had put together a list of a number of projects, totally more than probably the state will have available, but nonetheless, we're ready with our projects. There is a section of the economic stimulus bill, which is called the Stabilization Fund. It's about $54 billion. That's where most of the education money will flow, and it will leave a lot of discretion to the states and to the governors. So we are going to be working with Mr. Gilchrist and the Division of the Budget to ascertain what share of the money that we can use for operating, what share of the money that we can use for capital. And as we start moving along, I'm sure, Mr. Chancellor, you'll have some reports to be able to give to this Board.
Thank you, Iris. Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin and Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave have, at my request, been working very quietly with the Division of the Budget, trying to get some guidance and help the Division of the Budget think through some of the items. And again, we're not in a position to speak publicly about anything yet because we don't have the level of specificity that I think would be needed to give an informed discussion to the Board. But I wonder, Alan, if you have anything that you'd like to share, and Ernesto, since you've had those very close discussions with DOB?
We've been speaking to DOB at a daily basis. Those of you in the room who have been budget directors before will probably find this surprising. They've been reasonable, they've been fair, they've been understanding of what CUNY's needs are. They have some constraints because some of the money comes down formulaically, but within those constraints, my sense is they're going to, to the extent that they can, really be supportive of making this university as whole as we can be.
Ernesto, anything?
Just to tell you what that is, that the, whatever it is that the governor, which I believe next week he will announce, will require the approval of the legislature. So it's not merely the governor who is making the recommendations. The Senate and the Assembly will have to weigh in on the final allocation of resources.
Thank you. Let me just continue a little on the stimulus because here I can speak with much greater specificity. Pell Grants are expected to provide about $17 billion increase in Pell Grants, and that will benefit our university rather mightily. Pell Grants are going up during the 2009-2010 fiscal year from $48.31, the maximum award, to $53.50, and in 2010 to 2011, from $5,350 to $5,550. We anticipate that CUNY will receive about $30 million of this increase, and another 6,000 to 7,000 students will be eligible for such an award. Right now, Mr. Chairman, we have about 90,000 of our students receiving Pell Grants, so that's very good news. In the area of college work-study, it's expected that the stimulus program will increase college work-study funds by about $200 million, providing funding for an additional 130,000 students across the United States for an average of about $1,500 each. Since CUNY's share of federal work-study funds is about 1 percent, we should receive an extra $2 million to fund an additional 1,300 students at the university. There are a host series of tuition tax credits that I can talk about at some later time when we get a better sense about that as well. Moving to the state, I have briefed the Board under several occasions since the governor came out with his recommendations on his budget. These recommendations have now been remanded, as all of you know, to the state legislature. I've had meetings, separate meetings, with Assembly Speaker Sheldon Silver, Senate Majority Leader Malcolm Smith, and Senate Head of Higher Education Toby Stavitsky, and Head of the Higher Education Committee of the House of the Assembly Deborah Glick, in addition to a number of other meetings. All of the Borough meetings with state legislators have taken place, and again, I want to thank those Presidents that took a leadership role in serving as hosts for those important meetings. We did have an extraordinary event largely coordinated and orchestrated by our Senior Vice Chancellor Jay Hirschenson. This took place in Albany on February 14. The CUNY Luncheon, which is held each year at the Black, Hispanic, and Asian Caucus Meetings, was even a bigger success this year. We had large numbers of members of the both Houses of the Legislature. The governor was there. Our new Senator Kristin Gillibrand came by to say a few words. Senate Majority Leader Malcolm Smith, State Controller Tom DiNapoli, City Controller Bill Thompson, and a host of others. So again, Jay, I thank you for really making this event very important. I do want to thank, I want to thank the trustees that came to that event as well. Vice Chairman Phil Berry, Trustee Rita DiMartino, Trustee Frida Foster-Tolbert, Trustee Ugo Morales, and Trustee Simone LeMans, who was there as well. We are cosponsoring a public higher education symposium in Albany titled, it's a long title, "From Recession to Resurgence: Public Higher Education, the Key to Revitalizing New York." This will be done with the New York State United Teachers, SUNY, the Professional Staff Congress, and the United University Professors. That will take place on March 3. On March 10, we are back in Albany organizing a luncheon with SUNY to recognize all legislators who graduated from public higher education institutions in New York State. We are still expecting that the state legislature and the governor will agree on a budget by March 31, and we will see if that happens. The discussions I've had with people in the governor's office believe that there is a good shot that that date could be reached. On the city side, with respect to our community colleges, all of you may remember that this past November, the university had been targeted with a $5.1 million reduction in the current fiscal year. However, the budget negotiations between the City Council and the mayor resulted in full restoration of those funds, so that was very good news. The governor's executive budget had proposed a 10 percent reduction in community college based aid in the current academic year, resulting in a projection of $4.2 million in loss of state aid, but this proposal thankfully was rejected by the state legislature. With respect to the city preliminary budget, the mayor issued his preliminary budget on January 30. The plan recommends city support for community colleges of a little over $212 million, or $30 million less than the recommended budget that we are in in 2009. The preliminary budget includes $16 million year-to-year increases, mostly consisting of mandatory cost needs for incremental collective bargaining costs, additional fringe benefit benefits, and pension payments, and building rental costs for BMCC. These increases, however, are more than offset by about $47 million in decreases. The majority of these decreases comes directly from reduced community college operating support, and about $24 million of these decreases are derived from prior year's reduction initiatives. While there are still, there are $22 million in new reductions proposed by the mayor for fiscal 2010. The preliminary budget also includes about $10 million in additional tuition revenue to offset these reductions. This revenue will be generated by a tuition increase of up to This revenue will be generated by a tuition increase of up to $200 per semester that was already approved by the Board, giving the Chancellor the authority to raise that tuition. We will see. There are a whole bunch of other areas here, and as we get closure and greater clarity as to the thinking and what the overall budget is, I will obviously report this to the full Board. We have two New York City Council hearings coming up. One, the joint hearing of the City Council Higher Education Committee, the Aging Committee, and the Small Business Committee, along with the Civil Service and Labor Committee meeting. That will take place on the 25th of February. And then, the City Council Higher Education Committee hearing to discuss the Mayor's preliminary budget as relates to CUNY will take place on March 20th. We have continuing good news on the enrollment front. Spring 2009 enrollment is estimated at nearly 242,000 students, up from 4.5% last spring and slightly lower than the highest enrollment this university ever experienced, which was in 1975 of 244,000 students. FTE enrollment this spring increased by about 6.6% from last spring, outpacing the 4.5% headcount enrollment. That is a very important number. To see the FTE enrollment increase at a larger, at a faster rate than the headcount enrollment says to us that students are being retained, and they are taking larger numbers of credits, and ultimately will be reflected when we see graduation rates, which continue to go up. First-time freshmen was especially strong this spring, increasing by over 11% from last spring, and transfer students enrolling over 3.3%. All of this sounds very good, but there is a tension, which I have talked about certainly with the presidents on several occasions, and I've also talked with the, with the Board about this. If, the enrollment is increasing for really two very important reasons. In the short run, enrollment is certainly being affected by the dire economic consequences we find all of ourselves in. More people are coming back to a university to shore up their skills, to get ready for when the economy turns around, and they will have access to better jobs. The second, which is a more long-range phenomenon, is the burnishing of the university's reputation. I've often said that higher education is a good example of an efficient market. People have access to all of the same information, and they are making their decisions about that common information. The value of the degree has gone up in a very significant way. And very shortly, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, we, the university, are going to be confronted about how do we deal with the competing demands of the moral imperative to give all students who wish to study an opportunity to study? But the other competing force is maintaining the high academic standards that we have worked so hard to instill at the university. This topic will be the central topic that we will be discussing, Mr. Chairman, next month when the, when the presidents go on a retreat. It is going to be the central issue that I think this university is going to have to face on an ongoing basis. We do have the Big Apple Job Fair that will take place on March 20th at the Jacob Javix Convention Center. I would like to commend President Jennifer Rabbe on being awarded the 2008 humanitarian, receiving the 2008 humanitarian award by the Carter-Burton Center for Aging at its 29th annual award celebration. Congratulations, Jennifer. Later this evening, Bronx Borough President Adolfo Carrion will present an educator award to our own Senior Vice Chancellor Jay Hirschenson, along with some other members who will be awarded for their work in, in their particular fields. Congratulations, Jay, on that. And I'd like to congratulate Bob Isaacson, the head of our CUNY TV operation, for receiving five Emmy Award nominations, which include Brian Lair Live, Nueva York, and Inside Lehman College, and two nominations for Ms. Annette Calderon in the Office of University Relations for her long, for her video editing work on CUNY.edu. And, Mr. Chairman, let me just, let me, in a personal privilege, just to say something that is sad news. Very recently, we lost a great man in this city, Max Bond, who was unquestionably the most, one of the most prominent architects we have experienced in this city. Max Bond was a very dear friend of mine for, for many, many years. He was with Davis Brody Bond at the time of his death. He was the partner in charge of the museum portion of the National September 11th Memorial and Museum at the World Trade Center. I knew Max when he was a professor of architecture at the City College, and he spent a number of years as professor of architecture at Columbia University. His accomplishments are large and profound, but for me, he was a gentleman, a man of great stature who cared about young people, advising them in ways that had profound influences. I remember Max telling me that when he went to Harvard, and he graduated Harvard, if I remember, in 1955, and then three years later at Harvard as well, receiving his master's degree in architecture, was advised by his professors not to go into architecture because he was a black man, and would never be able to make a living at that profession. But he stood tall, and it is a better world today because of Max Bond, and I will miss him on a very personal level, but we here at the university benefited greatly by his wisdom as an educator and his sensitivity as a human being. I don't know if Charlie Shorter, Charlie was a dear friend of Max Bond. If you would like to say anything as well, Trustee Shorter.
I'm inclined not to, Chancellor, because you have said it all, most especially that Max was an exceptionally fine human being. How deeply he touched so many lives in this city came home to me last week when I called a good friend who was Vice Chairman of City Planning, Ken Knuckles, to let Ken know. And he told me that when he, Ken Knuckles, was in high school, Max Bond had formed an organization to help young public high school students learn the field of architecture and go to school. And he, Ken Knuckles, under Max's guidance, went to School of Architecture and graduated, and he was one of 28 and is now with our City Planning Commission and also Chairman of the President of Upper Manhattan Empowerment Zone. And it just struck me, that's one person who rose to the top through Max's guidance. But with that, you're right, we lost a great man. But he has an incredible legacy in the city which we can all see and that will live on.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Are there questions for the Chancellor or comments on the Chancellor's report? All right, we'll proceed now to the policy items that require us to vote. I will move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for February 23rd, 2009. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, that carries. I'd like to also move the adoption, the approval of the minutes of the regular Board meeting of January 26th, 2009. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second on that motion? Are there any questions, revisions to the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those carry. We'll turn next to our committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be a short report. The committee met on February 2nd, 2009, and approved the following resolution. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution calling for the Board of Trustees to authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of University Controller with the vendor who will offer health care screening services for students, faculty, and staff during various health care awareness events held throughout the university. Such contract will not exceed a total estimated cost of $660,000 per annum during the applicable fiscal years. The contract term shall be five years, with an option for the university to terminate on each anniversary date of the contract. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the committee on this, on this item? All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that carries.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, the committee also heard a report from Vice Chancellor Malave on the status of the state and city budgets, as well as the federal budget, and a report from the university's Chief Investment Officer, Ms. Janet Krone, who summarized the presentation by Cambridge Associates to the Investment Subcommittee meeting, which was held on January 22nd. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on Trustee Wellington Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this February meeting, the committee approved seven policy matters. Calendar Number 4A, LaGuardia Community College, establishment of a Department of Natural Sciences. LaGuardia Community College currently has a Department of Natural and Applied Sciences. Some of the members of this department are being transferred out to form a new Department of Natural Sciences. By a parallel action submitted through the Chancellor's University Report, the Department of the remaining employees will be, will be renamed. The Department of Health Science, this department will house health professions programs such as nursing, physical therapy assistant, and occupational assistant. Together, these changes are expected to better serve students as well to improve support for faculty scholarship and research. Calendar Number 4B, John Jay College, establishment of a Department of Criminal Justice. Following extensive planning efforts, John Jay College proposes to establish a Department of Criminal Justice. This department will provide a necessary organizational structure to better support the college bachelor of arts in the criminal, in criminal justice. The new department will promote faculty collaboration, which will enhance instruction and curricular development, as well as provide for faculty scholarship, research, and development. By a parallel action submitted through the Chancellor's University Report, personnel are being transferred, appointed, and appointed to the new department. Calendar Number 4C, Baruch College, BBA in International Business. This program prepares students for careers in international business or for entering graduate study. In preparing this proposal, faculty consisted widely within Baruch as well as with industry leaders. Foreign language study is emphasized, and internship opportunities with international firms in the U.S. and abroad are foreseen. Calendar Number 4D, the Graduate School and University Center, online MS in Business Management and Leadership. The Graduate School and University Center, through the School of Professional Studies, is proposing to offer a fully online Master of Science Program in Business Management and Leadership, the first fully online graduate degree at CUNY. The proposed program is designed for students with undergraduate degrees in any discipline who are interested in developing or strengthening their skills in advancing, in advanced business competencies. The online MS in Business will offer instructions to those who, whose work or other obligations preclude traditional classroom-bound graduate education. Calendar Number 4E, Queens College, MA in Applied Behavioral Analysis. This program builds on the existing Master Program in Clinical Behavior Application, which is an advanced certificate in applied behavior analysis, and on a longstanding doctoral subprogram in learning processes, behavior analysis, which is registered at Graduate School and University Center but offered at Queens. Student will be able to work with a variety of populations in need of behavioral-based interventions, and will be eligible for national certification by the Behavior Analysis Certification Board. This program also provides solid preparation for graduate study. Calendar Number 4E, Queens College, MA in Behavioral Neuroscience. This program will provide promising master degree-level students with an opportunity to engage in research-based studies, which will prepare them for entering doctoral programs or for employment as research assistants or research associates in the medical, pharmaceutical, and biotechnological sectors. The program builds on the existing undergraduate neuroscience major, as well as on the long-lasting doctoral subprogram in neuropsychology, registered at the Graduate School and at University Center but offered at Queens. Calendar Number 4G, Hunter College, MS in Clinical Nurse Leader. The health professional category of clinical nurse leader has been, has been recently created by the nursing accrediting agency, the American Association of Colleges of Nursing. The proposed program to prepare clinical nurse leaders is for nurses who are already licensed and will prepare them as advanced general nurses with competency in clinical outcome management, care management, care environment management, and clinical leadership. Graduates will be eligible to sit on the national certificate exam. Item 4A through 4G were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the Board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for the committee on any of these items, 4A through G? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, those carry.
Information item. Interim Executive Vice Chancellor, University Provost Alexandra Loeb also presented an information item to the committee. She updated the committee on CUNY's enrollment. This spring compared to last spring, headcount is up by 4.5%, and FTEs are up by 6.5%. Applications for fall 2009 continue to be significantly ahead of last year. Intensive enrollment man, planning, and the management efforts are continuing in effort to, in order to maintain increased academic quality, given the current and projected enrollment increases. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on Trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on February 2nd, 2009 to consider the following items, which we now present to the Board for approval. Items 5A, 5B, and 5C pertain to namings at Hunter College and the City College of New York. I will present these items as a group. Item A involves the honorary naming of the Joseph Buttonwiser Conference Room for a distinguished alumnus at the City College. Item B names the Michael and Irene Ross Program for Jewish Studies and the Michael and Irene Ross Chair in Hebrew and Yiddish, also at the City College. Item C names the William Randolph Hearst Professorship at Hunter College. The gifts associated with Items A and C total more than $10 million. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters to ensure that compliance with the guidelines and recommend, and recommends their approval by the Board. Mr. Chair, I present Items 5A, B, and C for the Board's approval.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, those carry.
Thank you. Items 5D, 5E, and 5F amend the governance plans of three colleges. I will also present these items as a group. Item D amends the governance plan of Brooklyn College to streamline the promotion and tenure process to take effect in the fall 2009 semester. The amendments were approved by the Brooklyn College Policy Council in December 2008 and have been reviewed by the Office of the General Counsel. Item E amends the governance plans of CUNY School of Law to clarify its provisions on faculty reappointments, tenure, and promotion. The amendment was approved by the law school's faculty in October 2008 and has been reviewed by the Office of the General Counsel for consistency with the bylaws and policies of the Board of Trustees. And finally, Item F amends the governance plan of Kingsborough Community College to incorporate changes recommended by the College Council and the Middle States Commission on Higher Education. Commission on Higher Education. The amendments reflect administrative changes at the college over the past decade by modifying committee selection procedures, term lengths, and the titles of some delegates to the College Council. The changes were approved by the College Council in December 2008 and have been reviewed by the Office of the General Counsel. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends the approval of these items. Mr. Chair, I present items 5D, 5E, and 5F for the board's consideration.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions on any of these items? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Those items carry.
Mr. Chair, I would like to note that an additional appointment requiring a waiver of the bylaws has been shared with the trustees. This matter was previously sent to the FSA committee members for review and was placed in the chancellor's university report, which the board has just approved. It is the appointment with waiver of Section 117B 3 of the bylaws of Peter Beinhart as Associate Professor at the CUNY School of Journalism and also in the Department of Political Science at the Graduate Center effective September 1, 2009. And finally, Mr. Chair, I would just like to take in one moment to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Mr. President Jackson. Since I came on this board, he was the person who I had many nights of conversations and drinks with. He's been my mentor, and I congratulate him on whatever efforts he goes forward with, and hope he'll continue to also mentor me as we go forward, and just wanted to send my congratulation and, and word of appreciation and thank you. Thank you. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. May I call on trustee Rita DiMartino?
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has three items for the board's approval. The committee met on February 2nd, 2009 and approved the following calendar items. Calendar item 6A, Kingsborough Community College amended college association bylaws and certificate of incorporation. The Kingsborough Community College and its college association have mutually determined that it is in their best interest to transfer the operation of the campus childcare center from the association to the college. The overall management of the childcare center will not change as a result of the transfer. No jobs will be eliminated, and the center will continue to serve the same number and ages of children. Making this transfer will require amendments to the association's bylaws and certificate of incorporation to remove references to the childcare center. The association now seeks the board's approval of these amendments. In accordance with Board Bylaw Section 16.10, the amended bylaws have been approved by the Kingsborough Community College president and reviewed by the university office of General Counsel. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6A.
All right, you've moved the adoption. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Any questions about this item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Calendar item 6B, Brooklyn College Association Charter. The Brooklyn College Association, BCA, is a unit of Brooklyn College that has responsibility for the supervision and review over Brooklyn College student activity fees. In order to formalize a longstanding practice within the college, a charter for the BCA has been drafted. The charter affirms the BCA's duties to oversee student activity fees at the college. The charter has been approved by the Brooklyn College Association and the president of Brooklyn College and is consistent with the board bylaws. The president now seeks the board's approval. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item 6B.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Calendar item 6C, Hunter College, establishment of incorporated auxiliary enterprise board. Hunter College has determined that it is in its best interest to restructure its auxiliary enterprise board so that it is consistent with other auxiliary enterprise boards at CUNY. It is organized as a separate corporation rather than as a unit of the college. The college seeks approval of this change, as well as of the initial certificate of incorporation and bylaws of the corporation. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on item 6C.
May I have a second, please, on 6C?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I would like to move the three honorary degree candidates you will find at page nine in your revised calendar. May I have a second for these honorary degrees?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries. That concludes the public business of this record-time meeting, and I hereby declare it adjourned. [laughter]